Good evening and welcome to the City Council Conference Meeting of January 8th. We have three items on the agenda. The first one is a change order by and between the City of Norman, Oklahoma and Rudy Construction Company, increasing the contract amount by $11,059.95 for a revised contract amount of[26.77][26.77]$297,386.95. And this is for the Main Street paving project from Jones to Porter. Oh, it's not Scott.
No, it's not. I'm Tim Miles, Capital Projects Engineer, for those of you who don't know me. And tonight's agenda item number 33 is for change order number one and final acceptance of contract K-1718-127 with Rudy Construction for the Main Street paving project. And this is the project that is basically from the railroad tracks at Jones on East three blocks to Porter Avenue. It was the mill and overlay project that basically cleaned up the rest of downtown and addressed some of the pavement issues we were having. And we have a, basically, an overrun of three quantities. It was approximately 194 square yards of mill and overlay and then 84 square yards stamped colored asphalt pavement, which resulted in about a little over $11,000 of project overrun, and which is an increase of approximately 3.9% of the contract amount, which is very, very good for a project like this. And we're proposing to pay for this from excess funds from a street maintenance project that's already been completed.
Great.
If you have any questions, we'll be glad.
Any questions for Tim? Councilmember Casper?
I don't have a big problem with this, but just these change orders in general. Does the contractor bids on it, do they go spec it out and measure it and figure out that, I mean?
I don't think they get that detailed into it. They pretty much go off the planned quantities and then, but a lot of times out in the field you want to make minor adjustments. And I think most of these quantity overruns for the pavement were at the side roads. When you start doing the milling, sometimes you need to go a few extra feet to make it the best transition you can. But we did have a plan error that was caught after it was already bid, which was the stamped asphalt across Legacy Trail. Before that, just had the standard pavement markings and not the stamped asphalt. And we wanted to go make a little cut early.
No, I understand whenever we make a change or you know that the customer makes a change, you know, hey, that's not what I bid. You changed it. I understand those kinds of change orders. But I guess what I'm wondering is if I bid it and I bid wrong and I just have, when does the contractor eat it, so to speak? Like in the real world, if I do a bad bid, I eat it. I mean, when does that happen in the city?
Well, it's basically based on the price. If they underestimated how much the concrete cost them to purchase it and install it, that's when they basically eat it. But we, the plans are set up on a estimated quantity and then we pay actual, they measure everything and we don't pay actual. So we could put a little extra fluff in there if we wanted to and then we wouldn't have overruns maybe at the end if somebody died. But otherwise, it's just we're paying exactly for what we get.
Okay. That's what I was kind of wondering if the concrete prices went up. I bid it at two bucks, now concrete's 2.50. Do I have to eat that or does, you know?
If they don't get reimbursed for that and they take that as a credit.
That's the risk I take.
Thank you, Tim. Do you have, Councilmember Holman?
I'll just say, the East Main project that was done back in the early 2000s had this colored stamped asphalt, so I'm just wondering how we missed that in this project?
Yeah, I don't know. Well, Jones was never done though. The crosswalks at Jones and Legacy Trail was never done. And so the designer put it back exactly like it was before. And we didn't catch it when we should have.
Thank you.
Item number two is a change order by and between the City of Norman and MTZ Construction, increasing the contract amount by $29,089.49 for a revised contract amount of $111,553 for the Burlington Drive Drainage Improvement Project. And Carrie Evenson?
Thank you, Mayor. Carrie Evenson is Stormwater Program Manager for the City of Norman. On your agenda tonight, you'll see a change order for one of my drainage projects. It's the Burlington Drive Drainage Improvement Project with MTZ Construction. This is revising some quantities. We had some quantity overruns as it related to some panel replacements and concrete work on the street that we discovered as the project was moving forward. And we also had to add some ADA compliant sidewalks. That was not originally in the plan of the project, but as we adjusted and tried to make sure that the driveway approaches for the homeowners were in as good condition as possible when we left the project, we touched the sidewalks. When you touch the sidewalks, you have to bring them into compliance with ADA. So we had to do some ADA compliant sidewalks through this project as a change order. And that's what you'll see in this change order that I will see today. With that, have any questions for me on particulars? It was?
Councilmember Casper?
I would just say, I talked to homeowners in the area and tell you this fantastic job. They loved it. I know some of them actually separately bid, and I checked that they paid for it themselves.
Yes.
Took advantage of their sidewalks up like this and that sidewalk and drainage. And I've checked the past couple times, it's rained. And this is one of the number one problems I had seven years ago when I first got on council of this green algae just going through and stuff like this. And it finally got fixed. So just thank you, Sean, Scott, Carrie, everybody to get this solved.
And for our newer council members, listen to that number, seven years. Just know that a lot of stuff gets done, but sometimes it takes a lot longer than you think it's going to.
I was pretty excited about this, honestly, because this is one of the first projects that I started from design all the way through construction. It's actually made it. I'm very excited. We're going to see more of these, so.
And the original response was, there's really nothing we can do about it. It's just a naturally occurring drainage.
It's a good, that's a good news story. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Item number three is Annalise, and she's going to talk to us about the results from the most recent of several surveys that we've done. And then I think Carrie is going to make some comments and Amanda and Erin, and then we're going to talk about what we think this means for us.
Hey, so this is a survey that was requested at the December 18th meeting and was sent out for review. We worked on it with Han Public. And so these are the results. There were, in the beginning, a couple questions, notably question 12, which was asking if residents would support the utility fee, the bond, or both together. There wasn't the option for them to select neither for a few hours. We got that corrected pretty quickly, but we have not included those responses into this data, so that this is pure data from that. So we have, so this is a reflection of 878 responses total. There were 1,193. I will be sending that out to you guys so you can see the comments from all of the responses, if not, or the, just for the 878. So we did get quite a few, whole age ranges represented. Most of them were Norman voters. 94% say they are registered to vote. And representation across all the wards, Ward 5 was the most highly represented.
Ward 7 is not last anymore.
Ward 7 wasn't last. Unknown was actually last, so those were an unknown ward.
Oh, Ward 1?
They're all 7.
Ward 1 is last.
And we did ask a question, what elections people have voted in recently. We did include more than just the municipal elections, since there were only two municipal elections last year, just to see kind of voting history. And so most of the people that have voted have turned out to vote in the past, or took the survey, have said that they've turned out to vote in the past. Most say that they are pretty likely to vote in the upcoming elections. So this all means that we're getting kind of a view of who might actually turn out, that these people say that they will turn out for the elections. People do think that it, still think that stormwater infrastructure is an issue in Norman, that it is a critical issue and needs to be addressed. And we asked how knowledgeable people felt that they were about the issue of stormwater.
Everybody thought they were knowledgeable.
Most people say that they're pretty knowledgeable to very knowledgeable. That can pose some complications if they really aren't, or if they're.
Wasn't Han kind of concerned about those questions, having those questions in there?
These questions, these were, the six, seven, and nine were all questions, six, seven, seven, eight, and nine were questions that were added at the request of council member to gain more information on people's general knowledge about stormwater. And they were the ones that Han had suggested we put in.
And they were concerned about them confusing people?
They thought that it would add to the length of the survey and detract from the, possibly detract from the central question that had been requested to be addressed at the December 18th meeting, which was, would you support the bond? And that was their recommendation.
Yeah, I was just concerned because when I saw the results, I thought, I wonder how many people really understood that or knew what that meant. Because there are, stormwater's really complicated and I would say even someone that had gone to a meeting about it would.
Yes, yeah. So, yeah, so people do think that they're pretty knowledgeable about stormwater.
Highly knowledgeable.
And they, when asked what the most important issue that stormwater bond and utility fee would address in Norman, most people think that it's water quality protection, with the next closest being flooding. So people do think that water quality protection is a subject that should be addressed. Now, we gave an example of what the proposition was, laid out the tier fee structure for both the residential and non-residential, so everybody could see it all together, and gave an explanation of that. And then people were asked a question, if there were a proposition on the ballot asking the voters to consider the stormwater utility fee described above, would you vote to support it? 46% said no, 29% yes, and 24% unsure. So, next question, we asked about the HOAs receiving, or neighborhoods receiving assistance with maintenance of their detention ponds, channels, and plumes, and how that might affect people's willingness to support it. And who are either neutral or makes them more or less likely to support? Which is interesting. Now, after those questions we asked, so now if a bond was on the ballot and the utility fee on the ballot, would you support these one or the other or both of them? 43% said neither, 28.6% said both together, 16% for stormwater utility fee only, and 11% for the bond only. So you can kind of look at the both together combined with each set, and that's your support for, so for example, stormwater utility, 28% plus 16% is your support for the?
You don't.
Sorry, was that?
I don't know if there's overlap there. I mean, because if you add those together, then you're in the 40-something percent. If you add together the ones that said, I'd vote for both of them, or I'd vote.
Yes, there's potential for overlap there. Okay, so that's the end of the results. And what you have, just from the survey, and what you have in front of you, you should have received a handout from Han Public. They have looked at this survey in light of the, and all the previous surveys. So we did a phone survey with them on March 2018, in March 2018, focus group in May 2018, phone survey in October 2018. City staff and council did a survey on December 2018, and they've included that data in their results and considerations, as well as this online survey. So based on this, they're saying is overall, there's consistently more desire for information on stormwater-related needs, that there is a preference throughout all the survey data for a tiered structure based on the home living area, and that there is, throughout all of them, continued expression of distrust in the government's ability to manage funds. There are outlined concerns from Ward 5 about their contribution to the stormwater issues, and as well as preference for water quality messaging. People do think that water quality is one of the bigger issues that should be addressed. So looking at some of this, Han's recommendation, they say that they do believe that based on previous surveys, that there is support for moving forward with the bond, and that with the survey data that we have, that now that we have selected a structure, I mean, looking at moving forward that, it is on the cusp. And they believe that it could go either way, dependent upon community support or advocacy And then, and that brings us to the, they do believe that there needs to be a comprehensive stormwater education and outreach campaign moving forward with the bond or utility to move forward with those.
Okay, Carrie, do you want to make some comments about your thoughts about the survey?
Sure. So I would say, you know, from the information that I've gathered from the survey, these survey results are fairly consistent with what we've seen before, right? That the tier structure based on home size seems to be the supported option for the utility. I would say that, you know, in the past, when we've talked to Han about what we need to do as far as putting together a package with the bond and the utility, that when you combine that with the knowledge that we need to do a transportation bond in April, that having that package of valid items, the two bonds, the utility, all together as one, seems to be more supportive nationwide, right? You see a better outcome when you don't split the packages up into multiple consecutive packages. So I think when you're thinking about this and you're making your decisions, you need to bear that in mind as well. While this survey gives us additional information on what the current thought process is, we really didn't have a lot of time between the 18th and the time the survey went out to educate on the tier structure individually by itself. It was part of the potential options that are out there. Now it's becoming more of reality, I think, in people's minds, that this could be what they're going to see to vote on. So we need to continue our efforts to educate on what that means for the citizenry.
Any questions of Carrie? Yeah, I'm sorry. Hey, Councilmember Scott?
So if we pursue the tiered rate then, are we looking at the one, I guess it was alternative B? Okay, we're not looking at any other alternatives?
The, and Annalise, correct me if I'm wrong, the direction from council from the 18th was to pull that particular option as it was recommended by the Stormwater Citizen Committee. And that's where we headed with that.
Okay. Yeah, I think a really important thing about what Carrie said, and we talked about it this afternoon, I mean, Annalise didn't get this till, it's still warm, the information. It didn't get all put together till this afternoon. But in terms of what we've been told over and over again about the importance of education, so we went from asking people to make a choice about what they want. Do you want a flat fee or do you want a tiered fee? That's not nearly as, they're going to be more emotionally neutral about that. Then when you move to actually saying, okay, here's the fee that we think we're going to do, then that's something that makes people a lot more nervous. And we didn't have any time in between the survey where we really saw some improvement in people's attitudes towards everything. But then we came right back out within less than a month and did another survey. So we haven't had a chance to really say, okay, now why this and what do we think and what are your questions? And the education piece that we've been doing on all the rest of it all along. So. Amanda?
I don't have much to say, other than to reiterate. Right. So since the 18th, we haven't done any education because holidays came and we had just finished ward meetings. So there's been no public discussion of, if this were your choice, how do you feel about it? And I think that the, I'm not an expert, the jump in respondents is, I think we've reached, as many people who are interested and want to come to meetings and want to have conversations and want to hear about these things, we've been reaching since last March, last spring. Then there's a whole nother population of people who want to vote and are interested, but not necessarily in coming to the meetings. And so when you start talking about what could be a final rate structure or plan, then a lot of other people's interests are piqued and they weigh in. So I think a lot of our numbers went up because of that. That's my own conjecture there. I'm not, you know, a professional at that. But we also found on all these months that we've done education, that even just in an hour-long session, community session, we could move people's needle from, I'm furious about this, I'm not supporting this at all, to at the end, I'm willing to support something that you guys have talked about. And there's a lot of committee members here that have heard that through all these months. So I do think education is still very important. I don't know how much, how many more people will reach talking about, what options do you like? I don't know. I don't know. We had meetings in every ward, we had six open houses, we were told to have two, we had six, we did focus groups, we've done four surveys. You know, I don't know. I don't know if we can reach more people or if we really start reaching the masses when things become a little more final and we're talking about a plan. So that was just my two cents. I don't know if Andy has anything he wants to say.
No, I would understand Amanda's comments. I reiterate that same thought. I think we've done a lot of them, the, what should the utility look like? I think certainly this information is new to me as well, and I'm learning it this afternoon also. I think, I think there's a lot of communication and conversation. Education's the key. We live in an education town, we've lived and died by that for so many years. I think that's certainly the case in this bigger issue. This is a tough decision. It's a hard decision. I think, I think we all in this room, or each and every single one of you in individual conversations, say, we have a stormwater issue that has to be addressed within our community. So I think the question really before you today is, it's easy to get bogged down in the details of which utility and which, what the mechanics of those are on the data. I think the question really is, is now the right time to move forward on this utility? And I think it's going to take each and every single person in this room and others, because there's a lot of misinformation or lack of information, lack of understanding within our community of what stormwater means. One of the reasons I think it's really easy to say I support a bond is because when I see a bridge washout, I have a picture, Instagram world, I can see that, I can understand that. It feels visceral, it feels, and part of me, when you're talking about trying to protect water quality and things that we just kind of take for granted as a citizenry, I think it's much harder. So I think there's an education that certainly starts, obviously, with each and every single person here. But I think it's going to be a big part of every effort, whatever effort you feel like is appropriate to move forward on. But I do encourage you, I think, to take that next step and certainly analyze very clearly what has been proposed and look at it in that context versus going back, I think, and trying to, I don't, I really do feel like the alternatives, three options that were provided by the Citizens Committee were really well-vetted out. I'm not saying there's not some little tiny things that can be changed, but I do feel and reflect and represent, I think, a group that feels like those were really strong options that we want you to be considering. I think the tiered structure, certainly, that was talked about last time, makes sense. We would support that.
Councilmember Wilson?
I appreciate all the work that the Citizen Committee has done, all of those meetings and the education that's happened in those meetings have been helpful. I did a very impromptu Facebook survey, just to kind of, I know there's the in-person, there's the meetings, the people won't engage, and then there's social media, engage or not engaged, quality or not quality. I think it's anecdotally something to think about. And what I got was 244 people took my little survey. The options were no fee at all, and this is all about utility. No fee at all, tiered with an ag tier, which is my made-up thing that I've thrown out there, a flat fee or the tiered 369 that's been suggested. And just for your information, 151 were no fee at all, because Ward 5. Tiered with an ag tier was 64. So of the people that wanted anything to do with a utility, tiered with an ag tier was popular, 64 votes, 21 for a flat fee and eight for 369. Just throwing it out there for extra information.
Say the last two again.
The flat fee that was recommended by the committee and the 369. So there was a lot of conversation and we weeded through the, some of the, you know, but I feel like it was good and the conversation about the ag tier was interesting, because I felt like we, I pulled out of that that people were willing to pay something, but they wanted a nod towards the fact that they were in a different situation than an urban, you know, participant in the community might be. So throwing it out there.
Okay, thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Holman?
The thing that stood out to me the most in this survey was question 14. You indicated you were unsure if you would support this fee. Please share your reason why. And 725 people skipped that question, skipped answering it, and only 153 answered it. So I think that really speaks strongly to the education part of it. People aren't sure and can't maybe explain why they don't support it or why they would support it.
Right.
So that one stood out to me the most as far as the survey goes.
Yeah, I think even though, even though a lot of people said they felt like they were pretty knowledgeable or very knowledgeable about it, I think maybe that means more that they've heard it a lot. I'm not sure that they've heard a lot because we've talked about it a lot. I just, I don't know what the depth that that is, but that's a really good point that, than what they're saying, but as far as actually doing it, they're unsure about what the best thing would be. Yeah.
And you guys don't have all the comments here, didn't have time to print that out. You will get that in email. It's like 86 pages, so.
So yay. That'd be fun. She was going to run it off, but it was suggested maybe she should email.
So, Councilmember Holman, you're saying that people don't know how to respond. And what, a lot of what those responses are, is that they just want to know what the plan is and they don't know how to support it if there's not more discussion about, well, what will you, what do you exactly go towards? So to reiterate, a lot more education.
Thank you. Councilmember?
I guess my question is, what's the next step? Let's say we take Han's recommendation and do not move forward with the stormwater utility right now. The need for it, the need in the community for stormwater services, is it going away? So what's the plan for it?
I mean, I.
I don't know if that's for you, I don't mean to pitch on spot, or for Andy and Amanda. Would we recall the committee and have them do some of this education and talk more just about the 369 and what that money would go towards? I mean, I'm just, that's to me kind of the, what I'm worried about or thinking about.
Well, I'll make this suggestion and then I'll let them talk about the education piece, because I think that it's going to be really problematic if we say, and I'm not saying we should or should not, because this certainly raises questions about how close are we to getting that, going over that 50% of people that feel like they know enough that they can support it. But I think if we decide not to put the utility on, then you're talking about not doing the utility for a long time. I don't know whether the committee would be willing to continue on in that sense or not. I think we'd have to regroup and talk about what the education program would look like. My suggestion now is that we, because one of the things they're saying to us is, how much support do we have in the community? Who are the people that are going to be advocates? And we need to get out in the next two weeks before we make, before it's decided at second reading. We need to say, who are our advocacy groups? And that's up to us to get out and talk to the biz, whether it's the downtowners or the Sierra Club or the developers or whoever. It's up to us to go out and say what kind of. It's up to us to go out and say, what kind of support do we have here? You know, I'm all in on this. What kind of support do we have? But that's what I'm hearing Han say is one of the pieces that we need to, you know, that we need to educate. Yes, Annalise.
And to speak to that, and when I talked to Han about their results and their recommendations, they did say that that would make the difference is on whether they would recommend moving forward with a utility fee as well or not would be what kind of outside support do we have in the community and what does the opposition look like?
Yes, Councilmember Clark.
I'm all for moving forward in April with both of them. I think we have the foundation, thanks to the committee and all their work, to get the support that we need. But I am interested in seeing what we can, what kind of commitments we can get in the next two weeks. Another concern that I have is we are, there's a lot, a big push from Norman Public Schools on education with their bond.
Right.
Which is February 12. So are we going to be able to even start educating on this bond and utility after February 12?
I wouldn't think we'd start something till after they've done, done theirs.
I mean, we'd have to wait. So I mean, that would give us time to really strategize and have a good plan to do that. So there's that. But I'm interested in seeing what kind of, of support we can get in the next two weeks.
And we, and we do still have, I mean, I think we still can get some help from Han. And then there's the issue of our messaging. What is the message that we're going to be taking out there as a council in the next two weeks, talking to people about, are we going to get your support for this? Or are you going to, you know, we have, we have actually quelled some of the issues that we had the first time. We still haven't, you know, Ward 5, we still haven't found an answer that works for Ward 5. Do you guys want to say something about the education question that Councilmember Hitman?
Well, I think you said it about the, you know, the advocacy groups and what type of community support do we have? I mean, we have to find that out. You know, we've been talking to individuals. We've been having individual meetings. It's been individual committee members talking to individual citizens, which is important. But we also know that, you know, groups can become pretty powerful when they're a group. So we got to find out where some of these groups stand and, and see what that looks like. I mean, I would be in favor of moving forward with first reading tonight, myself, it's not my decision, doing that legwork in the next two weeks and hopefully all of us can contribute to that. And, and then second reading would be in two weeks. And then, so we wouldn't even be able to start any education really until after second reading about language were final. And that, and that gets Han a little time to get the deliverables done. So that timing, I think, is okay. I think that's okay even with the school bond. So I just think that's our next step. That's what they're recommending. But I don't think that it's dead on these recommendations that they've given us tonight. I just think we have a little bit of work to do.
Yes, please.
No, I totally agree with that. I think, and Annalise, I think there were sort of a lot of the words really resonating with me when you say that a lot of this is, to the mayor's point about advocacy groups, different groups are out there. Because I sit here tonight and I suspect each of you are the same way, certainly with the wards that we represent, where I know I'm fairly biased on this. Not only do I have information and education and neat detail and spent almost two years working on this as part of the Citizens Committee, and Anna's been doing this a lot longer than I have, many of you have known about and have worked on this a lot longer than I have. And so I realize that, but I also understand really Han is recommending is saying, I think when you look at the studies, information, we've got the right answers. I mean, you can argue, you know, to Councilmember Wilson's, you can say, okay, flat fee or tiers. But I mean, I think generally this group said we prefer the, I think you have the solution. Now it's a matter of whether or not that solution best fits for the time and your constituencies and for these advocacy groups. And I think that really is the question. So I tend to agree, rather than slow down the progress or, or stop the opportunity of having this be something in April, I would encourage the group to consider for first reading and then still take the time. And as Amanda said, I'm happy to work with any group that I'm connected to, to be in assistance to you over the next couple of weeks. And then, then make that determination on whether or not that, that really needs to happen. But to me, I think if you stop tonight and you've eliminated that as an option, I think that would be unfortunate not to get that additional information from outside groups.
Councilmember Hitman.
I guess I have sort of two requests, because this is really, this is really important for our community. I think we all agree with that. One would be, with the time that we would have before the next council meeting, could we get a statistically significant, or the right word is statistically accurate, or not an online poll? Can we get a real poll done? I mean, I don't know if the right word is the, you know, statistically, you know, one that's statistic.
Statistically.
A more valid one. And I'm not saying that online poll Survey Monkey's not, but just one that a statistician would say, we've called X number, this is within 3% of the margin of error, whatever. Just to have another data point.
The Survey Monkey wasn't that way, right?
The Survey Monkey wasn't a call, but it is statistically significant. Having 878 responses is statistically significant for the city of Norman.
Okay. Well, if we're really willing to rely upon that as the data that we ultimately make our decision with, that was my question. Then I want somebody later to say, well, that was just a Survey Monkey survey, and so you don't, you shouldn't consider that. So if we're comfortable with that data results.
They're going to say that.
I guess I'm asking that maybe do we consider having another type of a survey done that is not a Survey Monkey? If, I just don't know if that's considered statistically significant, whatever survey. That was, I've heard that people were concerned, some people have expressed concern to me about an online survey as something that we would rely upon for making a decision. I don't know if that's accurate or not. I'm just raising that as a concern or question.
No, it's absolutely a valid concern. And I know there were a lot of people that felt that way. And, and, and I have a concern about what happens when you just put it online and the other people can, I mean, I have a concern about the control of that. But we did have two other phone surveys that were done.
Randomly.
They were done randomly. And the, the information we're getting is, is consistent. I'm, I'm having trouble.
I mean, my, it's kind of like, I think you all said, my, my concern is it's, there's a big difference, this is why I asked for this extra survey. In my opinion, there's a big difference between asking people, you want a flat fee or this tier, versus saying, would you vote for this specific thing?
No, you are exactly right.
This is what we're thinking about putting on the ballot. Those, all those other surveys before this one that we just got tonight were not, will you vote for this specific one? That's why last meeting in December, the eighth meeting, I thought we needed one poll that said, would you vote for this one? Because that's when it really gets to, you know, you know, crunch time, is when you put that in front of people, will you vote for this? And so my question is, and I'm relying upon who were in the room or the experts, do we want to do another survey that is not an online-type survey to see what that data point looks like in order to make a final decision? Because the numbers right now on that online survey don't appear to be very strong for moving this to a vote, in my opinion. The other thing I would ask or say is, can we recall the committee? And would the committee consider doing a, because last meeting I attended, they did take action, I thought, on the bond, but I had never seen them actually cast a vote or sign a letter or do something as a committee saying, if you put this one on the ballot, 369, we will stand with it and we will support it. You know, if that, because I think, I've heard many people say that, you know, how council votes could influence this vote with the people. For example, if it's a five to four council vote or nine to oh council vote, that could make an impact on the likelihood of its success. If we're going to rely upon, and I, as many people know, I respect the process. Our process has been the Citizen Committee. But right now, there's nothing from the Citizen Committee as to where do they officially stand, so to speak, on the record on this potential idea of a 369 vote. And I think that would be helpful to know, for me at least, in making a decision, where does this committee stand on that possibility of that being what we put on the ballot? And for lack of a better expression, getting them on the record in some fashion so that we as council know, you know, how much reliance or non-reliance do we have on that committee?
Councilman Hitman, I might object, just as a, as a one member of the committee. I do know that very officially, in a very, very open meeting capacity, the committee voted very, very, very start for a $5, or sorry, $6.25 flat fee. Then at the request of several members of this, of somebody, and some of you not, so we weren't elected at that particular point in time, then we offered the alternatives. And the committee did meet, discussed those alternatives. And I, again, I do want, whether what we specifically talked about, the $3, $6 and $9, I would actually defer to other committee members that are here.
We did.
But I did feel like it was very strongly supportive of any of those three options. We felt like were appropriate. Now, did we say one or the other? We said we preferred the flat fee at the time, and this group has met and said, no, I think we prefer, if we're talking constituents, a tiered fee. But I do feel like with some certainty, and I'd have to go back and look through the minutes and all the different words that were said, but Amanda may recall, that I do feel like we said that was appropriate. We were, we were happy with that.
It would never have been in our recommendations if the committee didn't agree on it. I would just say that.
What I took from it was, we want a flat fee. And if you do a flat fee, it needs to be six and a quarter. However, if you don't want a flat fee and you're going to do tiers, this is a tier structure we would support.
That's correct.
So kind of, whichever way you go, this is, this is the flat fee, and this is what we think it should be.
That's what we're saying.
If you don't like the flat fee, and you want to do tiers, this should be the tier.
Well, because we felt like you all deserved options.
Right.
And, and not, not this, the same option, but, you know, $5 or $6, you know, not just two flat fees. We felt like you deserved options. And, and we would, that would never have been in our recommendations. And there's other committee members here that can shake their head or stand up and, and agree with us had that not been the case. Now, and, and we signed those recommendations before you got them. We did not write an official letter saying, you know, because we have not met as a committee since you all made this decision on the 18th. But I don't know if that answers your question, Councilmember Hitman. Makes you feel better? I'm not sure.
Councilmember Scott.
Okay. So I wasn't here on the 18th, which is, I think, why this is all fuzzy to me. But I do wonder, so if we go with a tiered rate, what we're looking at is what you guys on alternative B came up with, and there's no further discussion about.
Changing the tiers.
Changing either the tiers or changing the commercial rates, any of it.
I think we could do that.
That's completely up to you. But now tonight is first reading. So that change would have to happen to be first and second reading, or it's postponed beyond April. That's completely up to council. That's an option we've given you all, all along.
I would also like to voice my support for putting it all together in April, just because I do remember the first survey reflecting that people are more likely to support all of it together. So I want to come up with something that works pretty quick, between first and second reading.
Yeah. I will point out that, and, and I just want something that, that our residents will feel is a reasonable thing, that will help us do a better job with stormwater management and do a better job so that we have better water quality. And we don't have flooding. I mean, we desperately need that. And I want it to be something that the public can accept. I am going to point out that now we've done a number of different surveys, we've done a number of different meetings. And really, the only tiered structure that anybody's heard about is 3, 6 and 9.
Right.
And you do, if you start changing what you've been talking about, you do have a lot of, you, you get a lot of pushback because people go, wait a minute, this is what we were talking about. This is what you asked me about. Now it's different. So.
Follow up?
Yes, ma'am.
Follow up. Basically, what Serena said about the ag rate, if Ward 5 is more willing to at least support something like that, I think that's worth looking into as well as far as pursuing a tier. Because Ward 5 responded heavily. They're following this issue. And I think if they're going to support something, we need to take that into consideration.
I'd support that as well.
Okay.
I guess my concern, the question is, on the ag rate, I mean, if it's residential, they're 369. So what would the ag rate be?
We can talk about it between first and second reading.
I mean.
I don't know. And that would be something that I would take feedback on. I, you know, obviously, I just had to, you know, I'm imagining myself that it would be a kind of in the maintenance tier, maintenance, I'm seeing, I'm using words that I'm just thinking of right now. Maintenance tier, that we, we are participative in a community. We understand that, you know, we're not getting a lot for this, but we want the roads to be good. $1, $2. There are 2,906 houses east of 48th Street that would fall within that. Possibly some of those might be RE instead of.
Lot seven would be RE.
Yeah, I think I actually had that number and that was specifically ag. I'd asked for that number from staff, but I think it was specifically A1 and A2. But that's the number we can get from staff to see what that dollar impact would be.
What, do you have a feel for what that price point is? I mean, is.
$2.
$2.
I was going to say, Kerry, maybe.
I think if you tell the rest of the city that just because you have a 1,200 square foot house, this side of 48th versus this side, there's $2 and you're $6. I think the fairness issue just swapped between.
I don't think so, because I think that same person has to maintain 10 acres. They cannot have a one acre lot. They cannot have a 500 square foot lot. They cannot have, they have to have 10 acres. And you know how much it costs to replace a 10 acre lots of driveway?
I'm talking about the reception of the other people.
Do you know how you have to take care of your own infrastructure out there? And I'm not talking about the roadway. I'm talking about watching the water stream across my, my property. I have to go out there. The city of Norman is never, ever, ever going to do anything on that 20 acres. And I cannot build anything other than what is there right now because of the city of Norman's policies.
I fully understand Ward 5's concerns. My comment was, if you address Ward's 5 concerns that way, what effect does it have on the rest of the city, which is more than Ward 5? And if none, then great. I mean, I'm just, I don't know what that answer is.
I understand that too. I get that. And I, and you could start narrowing it down to, you've got HOAs, that's a whole different situation. You've got, you know, I got it. But I do think the HOAs are getting some more infrastructure from this. They have those.
But the HOA question here, can I say it doesn't matter, which was concerning to me?
Sure.
So I don't know. Is that something that you, we take out? I mean, that's something I'm a big proponent of. I think the HOAs are getting.
Well, we've heard it in a lot of meetings, that neighborhood support, not HOA, but neighborhood support is very important. Councilmember Holman and then Clark.
So I do support a tiered system. That's what I've heard the most support behind from people I've talked to. I think that's the most fair. But just based on this conversation right here, my concern is that we don't agree on what that is yet. 369 is the one we've heard about. I'm interested in something that addresses the, not just Ward 5, but agricultural. There's agricultural land in Ward 7.
We got some to you.
Every ward's got some property in it that's agricultural. My concern here is I do support it being, them all being together also. I want to do that. But having been through this before and watched, being a part of making a plan that failed before, you know, back then, we didn't agree on the plan until the day that we sent it to a vote. And I'm concerned about repeating that. And we cannot, we cannot afford for this to fail again. We have to get this right. And I just want to make sure we're not going to rush this over the next two weeks. Not that the process has been rushed. We've been talking about it for years. Just that the council making our final decision, that we push it because we want to get it on the April ballot so bad, which I want it to be on the April ballot so bad. I think they all need to be together, but we just cannot afford for this to fail again. We've got to get it right. And I think we've, we've got some conversations we still have to have. So that's where I'm at.
Councilmember.
Nope, I was next.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Clark.
It's basically piggybacking off of your comment. I don't think it should be a Ward 5 thing. I think it should be your acreage, because I have that in Ward 6 as well. And so that could be something that helps address, that I've mentioned several times. We have a unique character in Norman where we're both urban and rural. And I think that would be a fair way to address that. And it can't be just Ward 5.
No, I don't, I don't in any way want it to be, that's why I've called it all along an ag tier. And so you'd have to be ag zoned, because that's where you start having your more stringent, not to, not to interrupt you, but what I'm thinking is the more stringent, you know, land occupancy requirements. And I get that we also have some, you have, you know, agricultural things happening, but I don't think we have any corporate farms. And I feel like we could address any pollutants through the corporate farms. But I'm going to agree, and I'm, I guess I'm just taking off here, but I'm going to agree that we need to have a bigger conversation to have if we want to have this part of it.
I mean, I know that it's, it's interesting to change it now. Like you said, Mayor, and I agree with that. But we have to address that issue and the unique character of our community. There's no reason why we can't think outside of the box on this, but we are running out of time. So I agree with that as well. I'd be willing to do a special session.
I think I'm more concerned about changing the tiers, starting to mess around with the tiers. If there is some, if, if you're just talking about, I mean, I don't know how we could get the, I don't know if we can get the information that fast. If you're only talking, you're only talking about farms that are 10 acres or more, you're only talking about.
You have to be 10 acres to be a farm. Period. In the city of Norman.
Yeah, but there are, there are still, there are platted, there, there are plants on acreages that have houses on them.
But those aren't ag, those aren't zoned ag. But those aren't ag, those aren't zoned agricultural anymore. Those are rural, rural estate.
I think some of them are still agriculture.
Very few. I'll put my hand up.
Okay.
Did I interrupt you?
Did we? I don't know. Councilmember Castleberry, and then Wilson.
One of my concerns, and at least, do we have any feel for this question 12, where we have 43% say neither? Does that mean I don't like either one of these plans, or I'm not voting for anything that's a bond issue, or I'm not voting for any utility, no matter what the rate is, or is it...
It does say that they're voting for neither one of those that were presented. So, the utility as it stands, and as was presented with the tiers, and/or the bond as it is presented.
How many comments do we get? I haven't got a chance to go through all of them yet, but I know one of the concerns that we've heard is, not till we do a senior senator, not till we do the UMP TIF, okay? And so, which I think will be resolved in the next month. I mean, I think all those issues will be resolved one way or another, you know? The UMP TIF will be ended one way or another, I mean, within next month. So, that would happen before this election, if we do it in April. What does that do to the needle, do you think? Do you have any feel for that?
Well, I can't predict what it might do for the needle. I can speak to what comments we've gotten on the survey. I had, again, hadn't had a chance to look through all of them. We have over 1,000 comments, and I've been working on reading through all of those. But what I'm seeing is that there are a lot of opposing viewpoints. So, people say, I don't think that the business tier is high enough, or I think the business tier is too high, or I think that the tiers are too low for residential, I think the tiers are too high. So, you get a lot of opposing, and I think that's what's showing, is what Mayor was saying earlier, is that we have to have more messaging on what we are doing, because people are still, you know, you're going to get oppositional attention, but there's not a lot of conversation about, well, what is this really going to give us, what is the utility fee going to give you specifically? And there's a lot of comments about that. What is this plan going to give us? What does it do? What do we actually get out of the utility fee? Whereas the bond, you can look at and say, these are the projects that are going to happen. And so, there can be more education around that.
And I have heard at several of the meetings, people say, honestly, just say, just make up your mind and tell us what you're going to do. I think a lot of people are a little frustrated that we can't make up our minds. So, all right, Councilmember Wilson.
Because of this conversation is why I would prefer that we did the stormwater bond, transportation bond, and keep the utility conversation going. And I know that doesn't make good practical common sense to what CM Holman had said before, where, you know, we get this infrastructure money, but we are not keeping it up or maintaining it. That's not really very good, you know, stewards of the infrastructure necessarily. But I worry that the utility portion of this will tank the transportation bond.
I share her concerns. I don't, I don't think the utility will pass as is, for several reasons. I mean, a lot of different reasons, not one particular, there's not one thing we could solve that could change it. You know, like, there's a lot of different things that add up to get it to pass. But I don't think we're going to be able to address those by April.
In two weeks.
Or two weeks, really. I mean, you know, two weeks to get something that can go through there. And I guess, I would ask, if we do put this in April, and it fails, as a council, what are your thoughts when we come back and say, you guys have voted on this twice, we've told you no twice, why are you bringing this back up a year from now? Or is it, we still got an issue, we still got, we still got a problem, we still got to solve it, and so we're going to have to come up with something different, and so we're going to give it a third shot? I mean...
I think, I think that, I'm, just because you're looking at me, I'm going to respond to you. I think that if we, if we send this to the voters, the voters say, we do not want stormwater utility, then we as a council have to take the responsibility to make it a line item. I don't know how that's done, but that's, in my opinion, what they're telling us, right?
Pay for it now, the general fund.
We are, but it needs to be something that's talked about often, that we are like, here's what we spent on stormwater, period.
I can tell you all, if this is not addressed, this, I mean, I don't see how it's not going to work if it's not addressed this year. I mean, our budget problems are real, and you look out for the next three years. Yes, ending the TIF is going to help. That's going to fill the budget hole. That's not going to take care of our problems. And I'm just saying this as a general statement. The council has been kicking the can down the road so many years, and if we do it again, then you're looking out at 23, I don't remember the year, that it goes way up in terms of 21. And, and just because, not because we're, not because we're adding a bunch of people or doing a bunch more stuff, just in terms of salaries and benefits, we have not fixed the budget yet. And we've been talking about it year after year after year. So, I'm just saying, if we don't do it, then I think that it's almost as bad as if you do do it and it fails, because you're still not going to be able to do it for another year and a half, two years. We've got the water rate that's coming up, and...
There's still hope, though. If it doesn't fail again, there's still hope. If it fails again, I don't know what we're going to do. The state might have to intervene and force...
And the state may intervene because of the TMDL, and they start fining us $10,000 a day. Okay, Councilmember Hickman.
Throw out another idea, just an idea, not saying I support this or not, just to be clear for people. Could we do a survey asking some questions of other alternative potential plans? For example, I remember the first stormwater meeting, Mr. Heiple said, just pass two or three dollars flat fee. If we'd done that 10 years ago, like he's, whoever recommended that, we'd have been collecting next million dollars a year. I'm not saying that's a good idea or a bad idea, but do we want to have other pieces of data on other potential fee structures, where councils are making an informed decision on January 22nd? That's my thought. My, bringing that out there for consideration.
I just don't think we'll get the information back. We won't have, we won't have time to do anything with it. I think what Han has said, it's not that we need to do more surveys, it's that we need to get out in the community and do more work, is what I'm reading. But I do understand the concern about voting on the 22nd, but we still have a couple of weeks. Okay. Yeah, City Manager.
I think our community is survey weary. I think the surveys that we're doing have been scientifically statistical, and so, to do another survey now, I just think, I just don't think we're going to get what you're looking for. I mean, I know, we want all the information that we can possibly have to make the best informed decisions, but at some point, we just need to make a decision, whatever that might be. Because you're never going to have that 100% comfort level, that yes, you know, this is going to pass. I don't think, anyway. That's my, that's my opinion. But I think, based on comments that I've heard, that I've read, I just think doing another survey is, I just, I don't know, I just would not think it would be the timing. Now, if you want to do a survey, you know, down the road, you know, while we're, while we're educating and campaigning to try to gauge where we are on the issues that you've decided to put forward, you know, that's, that's something else, you know, that you might think. But I just don't think we have time to put something together, to have something that has the validity and the credibility that we're looking for.
Yes, Councilmember Castleberry.
At least, on the first survey we did on this kind of flat fee, is it that the flat fee, I got the impression that it wasn't that the flat fee was too high. But, so even if we came with a dollar a month, I didn't think that really changed it. It was, a flat fee's not fair, regardless of whatever that fee is.
That was a lot of feedback.
So, I think if we said, hey, we'll just do two bucks, three bucks, you know, something, surely, you're okay with paying two dollars, I mean, you're okay with paying a coffee a month for this. But that really wasn't a dish. Sure I am, but it was more fairness, that that's just not fair. And so, I think we've got to work in a tiered structure environment and do that. And guys, this is not that hard. There's a little computer over there. We sit there, we, I mean, I play with 30 minutes, and you can run all the scenarios you want to. It's real quick, it's an Excel spreadsheet, basically. This is not, this is going to take us weeks to do. No, it's not. It's, hey, let's do three, let's do six, let's do nine, let's do two, four, and 20. Let's do, I mean, you throw numbers out there, you see what you get, and then it's not.
Yes, I think that you're right.
It's very instantaneous, the responses we get.
And that's why Han had said that, based on previous surveys, that the tiered structure is preferred over the flat fee, is, that's the feedback that we received on the previous surveys. And to reiterate Mary's, I'd say that, yes, there have been a lot of surveys done in very close succession, especially the December and January survey, that we aren't, not that we didn't get a huge response on this past survey, but there were anecdotal comments, people that had thought they'd already taken this survey, they thought it was the same survey as the last survey. And I was just texting with Han, actually, now on the basis of, is a Survey Monkey survey statistically accurate as a phone survey? And they said that, yes, there are all surveys and all research, except some level of error, and that's phone surveys included, that this is a significant portion of people that responded that represent all wards and a variety of demographics in Norman. And it's a good snapshot of the sentiment at the time, which is all that a survey is, is representative of what the public sentiment is at that time of the survey.
Because even with that model we have, we could say, okay, let's put an ag rate there, and we go, okay, this makes a $75,000 difference in the entire budget. Let's put it in there. You know, or, oh geez, this drops us a million and a half out of deal. You know, I mean, you can see what the effect of what if it, and see, yeah, I'm willing to give up that to address those concerns, or, yeah, if I address those concerns, then I lose a million dollars of revenue, so it is a big deal. Or it's, hey, this is a $50,000 swing in the total budget. And it may be that, all right, people are so concerned about water quality, but they're not that concerned about the flooding in the utility part of it, then cut the flooding part of it out and focus on the water quality part of the budget, you know, and respond to, you know, trying to respond to concerns here.
Right. And that's, that's part of the education process, is really just talking to people about what their, what their concerns are, because different people, some people have no flooding problems. They haven't seen school buses sit on bridges that are flooded. They're not worried about that, but they are worried about water quality.
Well, I think we've had Ward meetings, I think we kind of know what people's concerns are. I mean...
I would just add, that question was, for me personally, because I took the survey and was a little problematic, because it's like, what's most important to you? Flooding, water quality, or maintenance? And I'm like, they're all related. And I couldn't rate them, and I couldn't click all of them, you know? And I think I even wrote in the comments, like, these are all related, they're all very important, you know? So, I'm not saying the results are incorrect. It was kind of a little bit of a trick question, because you didn't have, you could only answer, you could only click one box. And that's, you know, I really, I like sat and stared at it for five minutes. What do I do here?
And she wanted to check both boxes.
My life depended on it, you know? I mean, it was tough.
Okay. Any other, any other comments? So, we're still concerned. We do the first reading tonight, we get out in the community, we start looking to find out what kind of support that we have in the community, and decide if we can do, and I guess Kerry is going to look at agricultural land. And, I mean, the only way I see that we could do that, that would, they might think of as a break, is you just gave them the lowest of the tiers. I mean...
Mayor, I think if it's, if it's all right with you, where I would like to go with this is to look at the parcels that are designated as agricultural, A1, A2, figure out how many parcels there are of that. I know we've looked at that, we've got some data on that. Then also compare that to what tier, using the three, six, nine living area tier, what tier each of those parcels would be in, and get some kind of breakdown there. And then, we can look at, you know, of those, you know, if you reduced all of these down to, say, for instance, Councilmember Wilson's $2, what would that do as far as dollar wise? How would that change the amount that the utility raises? Does that sound like an adequate response to that concern?
Yeah, absolutely. I like that. Thank you.
Okay. It's going to take me some time, because I'm going to have to do some manual manipulation of some things, but we'll try to get this done as quickly as we can.
It does take some of the concern about just drawing a line and saying, everybody in this area, which is very problematic, because there are so many people that they're not on agr, they're in RE, they're in residential estates, and they have two acres or five acres or, and they're, I mean, it's, it's not really that different, so...
Which is why I had actually been, you know, went kind of with the ag tier, you know? For me, most of that is east of 48th, but not all of it. And not all of everything east of 48th is agricultural. So, I think that that's an appropriate response to all that. Thank you.
A1 and A2?
A1, A2. It's not going to make everybody happy.
You just at one point in time, exempt in a certain area, you know, exempt in...
I had said east of 48th exempt.
I mean, if, if, if we did that, as long as it is very clear, you get no services whatsoever. They don't think they do anyway, so it shouldn't be a big deal. But we're not cleaning your creeks. Your bridge washes out, we ain't fixing it.
But we can't, but we can't do that. You're talking about bond stuff now.
No, I'm talking about utility. Because we clean out, we cut out the ditches, we provide water quality. Say, if you don't want to pay for it, then you're not getting anything, and I don't think that's equitable. But that's, that's the only way you can do that, say, if you're not in, you're not in. I mean, you don't get any benefits.
Well, I think everybody has to pay something. Everybody is getting services. And I'll say again, Ward Five gets a lot more services and a lot more infrastructure...
Than they realize.
Than they, than they realize. So, I don't think there's any, just letting a whole section of town not be part of this. Councilmember Holman.
I'm just going to say, that's sort of the issue, too, is we, a lot of these things we have to do, even if people in certain parts of town don't want them, we have a water quality issue at Lake Thunderbird that has to be solved, whether, we don't, we can't just say we're not going to clean the creeks out there. We have to, even if people out there don't pay anything. So, we've got to.
How many bridges, Sean, how many bridges were, had to be replaced after the...
In the, in our worst day, Mayor, in June of 2015, we had 35 washout bridges, 28 of those were Ward Five.
I'd just like to make some alternate points. I don't know if that...
Okay, that's fine.
...sounding at me to say I can go or not, but that we, there's a wash that happens on a lot of things, you know? You get fire hydrants where you are. We don't.
I choose that.
Right, right, I understand. But I pay higher insurance, because I don't have the option for a fire hydrant. I would like to have a fire hydrant, but I don't have that option, so I pay for it in my insurance. I have to have a setback of a certain amount, I don't know what that is. I have to maintain 10 acres, because I'm agriculturally zoned. I have to, and I'm not doing this for me. I was okay with the last one, but personally, except me. But me as a 20 acre lot holder, there's just a lot I have to do and that I don't get. I cannot get, even if, and this is a whole different topic, but even if 99 out of 100 people want recycling in my neighborhood, I can't get it. You have to have 100%. So, there's just a lot out there that you just can't get.
Nobody forces you to live out there.
Nobody forces you to live where you are.
I know, that's my choice, exactly. And those are things I'm taking into consideration. Those are things I'm taking into consideration.
I think Councilmember Wilson, you are... I, I think Councilmember Wilson, you are a very strong advocate for your ward.
I am, yeah, it's true.
Okay. Any other comments? And so, um, I don't know if we're going to have to have some special meeting like late next week or something before the 22nd? Or how, how it is you all want to get this information back and forth?
We're going to have to meet before the next meeting. I mean, if we do first reading tonight, we're going to have to meet before second reading, if we're going to make any changes.
Well, I mean, you can make them on the floor, but that's not a very good idea. It would be better if we actually all agreed on what we were going to do.
I agree with that, or at least talk about it.
You could talk about it at your study session next week and, and move those topics to another night. What, I mean, what, Thursday night?
Tuesday.
I know, she's talking about Tuesday night, I'm going to be out of town.
Okay, right. So Thursday night is, um, 17th. Finance committee is all you have.
It's the most important meeting we have.
Just so mamby shmamby. Finance committee. Is it four, I mean?
We can move that around, split split school.
I, I will have to cancel something, but I'll be here. I, I really do want to be here for this discussion.
She'll be back on, on Thursday.
I'll be back on Wednesday afternoon.
Special study session on the 17th?
Five.
Five?
Or do it right after finance?
I'm fine, I'm, I can move finance up or.
I'd say right after.
That's just right. Come to finance meeting, learn, learn something, it'll be good. Can't use.
We just have the mid-year review.
When is it?
17th?
Yeah.
Five o'clock on the 17th?
What time is finance committee?
Four.
Four. I haven't updated my 2019 calendar.
Okay, we, we need to, we need more, because that finance, particular finance meeting is the mid-year adjustment. And that's when every one of you guys is going to ask for something. And so we need more than an hour. Which is fine, I mean, that's, that's the way it works.
Stripes.
You know.
So.
Until 5:30?
Five. Do we do the study session at 5:30?
On one street, that's it.
This is general fund.
All right, anything else? We're getting close to, that gives us a few minutes before the council meeting. Meeting's adjourned.
Do what, fundraising?